True.
Yeah, she was very, very helpful. I'm very, very thankful. Believe me.
Sure you are.
Because you get going along here when you buy yourself too anytime they.
Yep.
She had a great day for her.
What if they're doing any fishing?
The brother's got a nice charter. They all have nice.
I know. He showed me pictures of her fish before. All right, what in the hell do I do with my agenda? I can't over repair without that. Patrick.
Yes, sir.
The box down here on the bottom of uh. The environmental assessment form.
Mm hmm.
Would that be considered part three?
Uh, yes, where you sign it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's part three. After they determine that it's a negative debt. Yep, and and we can stamp that or whatever is.
I got it.
Well, I'm gonna hang around that way so we can do the housekeeping if we need to.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Hello.
All right, yeah. We'll do that that way, Patrick.
Okay.
Those in the center of the table. Are the secret forms.
Okay.
That we're gonna have to run through before we can open up any public hearing. And we're only gonna have. Two of them, and they're both fairly uncontroversial, so one's on the. Uh, North Road project and the others on the. Rockville Road.
Okay, okay. No, peace. R and P. Right.
R and P.
No.
Be different.
Okay, okay. So we need this.
One.
Uh. Yeah.
Wasn't one of these, right?
Okay, so there's the.
I think.
Yes, come on.
Hello. How are you?
Great, how are you?
Hello.
Thank you.
Did you already take theirs?
I think so.
Okay.
Let me see if I get one.
Cause they're short.
No, I'm. I'm sure I have them in the.
Yep.
Here it is.
We're gonna cut around, yeah.
All right, got it.
Bye.
You gotta get Larry out of here by five thirty.
Thanks.
Oh, that should be. With him. With an address by the thing.
Hope so. Oh, now you had to say it.
Oh, he should know.
Bob.
I can, I can.
Where are you?
Should be right here in any moment, right?
Yeah. Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Yeah. To hang around, Bob.
He has no.
Want to hang around.
Oh, in Catalan. It's for sale.
Yeah.
In a.
Hello, Ryan.
Hi, Joe. Is everyone ready?
Yeah, I see Frank.
Yeah.
About that.
For sale, right, not in front of the house.
I haven't seen Frank.
You have a shame, I know his trucks start back here. He told me, hi, how you doing?
Good thing.
Yeah, right.
Mm hmm. Yeah, when I went up there, the car walked around. It's built on.
Oh, it's on the phone. The whole lot, the whole lot.
Yeah. And then it's to the right, all the wood.
Yeah, the second one.
Yeah.
I don't think it affects what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah. Three seventy nine meter. No.
Oh, I mean, Charlie. You two thirty there?
No. That's what the last thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Right?
They were. You know, wow.
Something like that.
Yeah, it is. I love to, cause I wanted to see what, how much land it was listed with. It was smaller acreage, the one point nine five or.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. You know. But it goes back, it's deep.
Oh, yeah.
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 Some of the cars were electric.
So that's for the lot, yeah.
No.
Most of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the one, right, it's just, yeah, yeah. They're out working, it felt funny, but just wait.
Hey.
Hey. Who are you?
Is it you?
Good.
No, I went to the college and they said they weren't doing them anymore.
See.
And they ran to a roadblock, so.
Okay.
I try to stay in the truck when I go to these places. If somebody comes up to me, I'll talk to them, but I don't wanna be wandering around some place without.
Did I go to the college and give my?
That's where Lori sent me and she, they said they don't do them anymore, so.
Oh, they don't?
That's, yeah, this is a year or so ago. So let her know and she was gonna check. I don't remember what it was.
You're doing here? No, I've always tried, sort of stayed on the public, the road or whatever.
Right. Which ever asked me, but I got it. Yeah. I mean, I don't.
Oh, no.
Wait, but.
I'm sorry. I might have.
I think I bring that. Some pretty red.
What are you doing now?
Yeah. So far.
This was, oh, that was my trout card for the land. Is it trying?
Oh, it's great. No, thank you.
So where do we go?
That'll last. I don't know.
I don't know. Lori didn't know after I said the college. Don't think so.
We've all agreed that we can get out of here by five thirty.
I hope that's the best. I got all these. I'll just, I'll just move the journey. Twenty five, all right, good. Good, good, well.
Can you send us the plane there?
Yeah, actually, it's uh. It's kind of a, the one that's adjourned.
Hey, Ron, why don't we have an application for something mentioned for land? We're not considering that at this point? Like the other was all that implications, this was.
Children's church.
What we got when they.
Building a house?
They. No, for a, for something.
Gotta go to.
Okay, why is it for us?
Well, they wanna just give us. A brief. That was a note on your uh.
Okay.
To give us some grief over this tonight.
Okay, so that's all it's doing.
Well, I have a.
Uh huh.
Specific motion.
Pieces.
Of power.
Okay, I'm just curious.
The story while the music that he.
So I'll be reading some. Spent like yard.
You're now.
Yeah, he's been here.
Say.
They have to leave tomorrow.
So they're staying with you.
They want to learn their thing.
Yes.
Okay.
But we're gonna, yeah, two public hearing.
My little son had twins.
He has twins.
Okay.
One will be on Israel project at North Road. And the other one would be for the Catalano. Project. Other than that.
Soon to be.
Now you stay.
Right through.
Israel, that's not one in our package tonight, is it? Oh, I didn't see that name on there anyplace.
Yeah, it's going under their L O three or something.
Okay.
Martin Road Heffers or something.
Gotcha. For us to have. Yeah, just gotcha, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Got it.
Cause they moved the road and all that in January, and they'll be there like two months. Yeah, that'd be a good thing, you know, they have some.
Yeah, they do.
So it's been a house. And I either. I've always. To go walking down beside.
That can still rattle some savers, yeah.
A couple of times.
Nice.
So it'd be fine.
Nice.
Well. It's like.
Yeah. It will.
Yeah, okay. There, uh. I'm opening up a few new public hearings, but these people are gonna be interested in what they're going to. They're really gonna be interested when you look at it well. Those are the only two that's what I want to hear.
Okay, and then the others are a little bit. Wait, what? They're going to be. First, or we have a draft.
Do you hear? Do you hear?
This one.
Who? Two hundred. And eleven.
Just gonna. I don't want everyone to. The area. And once. It gives it a smile. Things were. Yeah. Oh.
I'm working. I'm working that way. You know, Ron.
Here, I thought we were gonna make up for other ten minutes either.
There we go.
How are you, buddy Jerry? Just living the dream.
There you go.
Actually, yeah, actually, yeah. It's been of us from.
Just living the dream.
I'm quite willing to play that. Yeah, that's true. I'm willing to go back. That was just a beautiful.
Lori. We have a signing sheet over there. Everybody, everybody's saying this.
I don't hope everybody can.
Do we have one? Do we have our signings? Oh, yeah.
We got no.
Yeah, we sold a tree or two. This one. We're gonna. Stay in. I was keeping.
Yeah, I got. You're talking about. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I mean, that's. But I. No one knew I went. Oh, I have. Next week should be later. I'm on it. Come on, dude. Yeah, I'm. When it's standing. Huh? Yeah.
Going. You're there.
Bob's still recovering? Bob's still recovering? Oh, he broke his step.
Did he really?
Yeah. Well, he broke the. End of the team. The knot and the ball on the end of the team. So I guess he didn't actually break his step. They said that was better, though. Yeah, he was. He got surgery and. And to rehab for maybe a week and a half, and then he was home up and downstairs, so.
Really?
Yeah, he was doing well.
Wow.
This would bring good therapy.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
I, yeah. He didn't even break his jaw.
That's right.
I don't know if that's why he's not here. I would guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cover your head.
So just see. You can go.
So that's.
Well, we're gonna see. I have knowledge. Really hard to say. Yeah, I'm not. One is just information.
Right.
And because of. Zone.
Our understanding. And if you think.
Well, it's. And who are. So this is. People.
When he asked me. More discreet. She had the.
So we. Doing.
Yeah. So.
No, no.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will allow. He was going. Watched us talk about. Speaking of projects.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, opening that one.
So we're good. Honestly, that's. Yes, sir. That's the thing.
So people.
It's causing me wrong. You're not. The. You know. Yeah. Again. I wanted to back. It was natural.
I mean, the now. In the. By. And yeah. Talking about. This year. When we came. The guy. Shock.
Yeah.
It's just. No.
This is, is. Fun. He's saying it. Something. This, he doesn't believe.
Yeah, that's. So.
Yeah.
Assets in there all those script. Yeah. I can't understand how they can subdivide right to the middle of buildings.
I think.
Well, good evening, everybody. Since we've got a very full agenda tonight. Like to get the meeting started. My name's Ron Pedalek. I chair the planning board here. It's the town of Owosco. And uh, we'll get started. If anyone wants a copy of an agenda, I think we had some circulating around.
They're right up on the podium.
On the podium. Okay, um. Members present, members excused, uh, Bob West over Andy Fiacco, Bill Galloway. Um. Vote enforcement. Patrick Doyle is here. Calling the meeting to order at four oh three. And I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda from the board.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll call vote.
Karen? Yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yep.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes. Gary. Would the planning board like to approve the minutes of the April fifth? Meeting is submitted, or are there any? Changes?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Karen, second.
Yeah, second, Karen.
I can second it. I have to abstain, cause I wasn't here.
All right, I suck at it. We'll call.
Okay, so Carrie abstaining? Yes, I am. Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yep.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yeah. Unin business. And the first project discussed tonight is Catalano Bennett Bartolata. Minor subdivision. We have any discussion from the applicant? Is someone here to speak on this?
Uh, Joe Pettigras, uh, I'm the attorney for um, the property owner, so. Uh, essentially, um, the homeowner, which is Catalano Ben Bartololo, they're. Are looking to subdivide uh, their existing parcel to approximately three point nine five acres. Uh, it's about, um. I think about one over two hundred and seventy feet of uh, road frontage, and so. Uh, pursuant to the survey maps that that we supplied, basically splitting it almost exactly in half, and one parcel being point nine nine acres. The existing parcel, uh, I shouldn't say existing parcel, but the parcel that would uh, have the house. Um, there's a um, a garage in the rear and a, and an old greenhouse that would all stay with the, be. The uh, other parcel, which would be one point nine five acres. So all the existing structures stay on that one parcel. Um, you can get the parcel uh, to the, to the south, heading back towards Losco Lake, would, it's all wooded. Um, both parcels would have uh, approximately the same amount of road frontage to uh, approximately one hundred and thirty five, one hundred and thirty six feet. Uh, of road foundation, so just looking to split that apart. And if the board's having questions that we have answered them.
Does the board have any questions?
Just to confirm the property with the house is currently for sale?
It is.
It is.
Yeah. Their entertaining office.
Are there, um. And are there? Are there plans for the other lot at this, at this time? Doesn't sound like there is.
Um, no, uh.
For the wooded lot that's, that's.
No, I, I, I think. My clients for the time being are gonna hold on to it. They might look to sell it down the road or. Yeah, uh. Uh, retain it, but.
Right, the, the reason I ask is because there's a, in the short form, there's a um, an item that says what was proposed to actually connect to existing water, wastewater utilities. The answer is proposed house is on an existing septic system, so that's why I'm asking, is there a proposed house to go on the? One point nine nine acres?
No, no, what, what they meant was that the existing house on the. On parcel is hooked to a septic system. It's not hooked to um. Any sewer system, cause the sewer does not run up that part of, say, around thirty eight acres.
Okay, so the existing house is, so it's proposed house lot is on existing, so that's the.
I think we're.
To the north.
I think we're interpreting that they're both proposed lots.
Right.
So that the.
Okay.
The existing house, just so that it was clear, isn't. Not, it's not.
Got it, okay, all right.
Patrick? Any uh, comments?
Let's both lots do uh, meet your minimum dimensional requirements of our code, which calls for a hundred feet of road frontage and one acre. For a property that's not on municipal. So, and so they're, they're almost twice the size of our requirements in acreage, and they, they have, uh, one has twenty, hundred and twenty feet of frontage. The other a hundred and thirty six and change.
Okay. Um. Got it? Pettigras?
It is.
Okay.
Good.
Um. I'd like to review with the planning board part one of the seeker. And I believe you all have it in front of you. These are all negative answers. For these first eleven questions, and part, do you want me to read through every single one, or have you all reviewed?
Yeah, I, I review it.
Over.
Yeah, I would. Other than that, that was the only question. So.
Okay.
I understand that.
All right. Then uh, we can. Make ourselves the uh. Legiate agency. And I will sign. Uh, negative declaration. So at this time. I can. Open a public hearing. With a motion to do so. And if it's approved by the board.
Second.
Ron? One second, can I get a motion for the seeker to?
Oh, yeah, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
First then.
So motion. Motion to. Yeah.
Somebody wanna move it second?
Yeah, motion to um, declare negative. Outside of declaration.
Okay.
Gary?
All right, so. We can open up. Um. Public hearing. At four oh nine. If anyone from the public have anything pro or con to say about this project? Right?
Uh, Frankie, you're O four eight six seventeen, he's heading, right? If in the future, there is a request to build on the property on this, some of the value property is to come back for the board for a.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Answered my question. Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. You get a motion to close the public hearing at four ten?
So will.
Second.
I'll second.
All right. And then you done that? All in favor?
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's introduce the resolution.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Read all of this.
So, or it could be a resolution. I don't know what I did with it. Hmm.
Brian, can I count out?
No, I'm new to it.
I'm new to it.
There you are.
Okay. All right. It's a long resolution.
Um. It's a long one. Can you?
I got it, Jim. Um. Whereas on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, the town planning board uh, met regularly scheduled to be. Open and close the duly advertised and properly convened public hearing. To elicit public inputs and comment on a subdivision application. Submitted by Frank Catalano. Caroline Bennett and Christine Bartolata. Whereas the planning board received as part of the application, a town of Owosco application for minor subdivision dated June twenty first. Um. An agricultural data statement. Also showed. June twenty first. And it's featured short environmental assessment form dated June twenty first, twenty twenty-three, and stamped subdivision plans. Survey of the property. Whereas the application has been reviewed by the planning board, which seems to be substantially complete. Planning board is lead agency, determine minor subdivision. Is an unlisted action pursuant to New York State. Seeker. Where the planning board referred to the application and all related materials. To the county planning board for review and comment pursuant to. Section two thirty nine. And two thirty nine M. Of the New York State General Municipal Law. Planning board convened and closed properly notice. Um. And held the public hearing in town hall. During which planning board enlisted input and evidence. From members of the public and others involved in or interested party. Whereas the. Official papers that say so. Whereas. During our regular meetings, the board is lead agency. To the seeker, carefully and thoroughly considered the environmental record pertaining to the application. And determined that no significant adverse environmental impacts. And determine that no significant adverse environmental impacts would be produced in relation to the proposed project. And this issue a negative declaration. It is further resolved. That said approval is based upon findings of the planning board. Minor subdivision application is consistent with the goals and requirements of the town comprehensive plan. Subdivision application is consistent with the goals and requirements set forth, set forth. In section one twenty-six of the town of Osco zoning law. And the minor subdivision application is consistent with appropriate development in the neighborhood. Be further resolved that upon approval of the final subdivision plat. The approved plat shall be recorded and filed in the Q County Clerk's Office within sixty-two days. From the planning board endorsement. Otherwise said approval shall become null and void. A copy of the said recorded plat will be provided to the town engineer and council. To the planning board. Be further resolved that this resolution will be filed in the office of the town clerk. Files that are readily accessible to the public and made available upon request. Subject only to the limitations established by the Freedom of Information Act. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. And we. Need a vote. On the resolution, so if we can get a roll call vote.
Sure. Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes. Resolution passed. Project one passed. Next up.
Yeah.
Next up. The winner will be. Okay, next. Topic of discussion, sunrise egg minor subdivision. Uh discussion with applicant, anybody want to speak on that, Chester?
Yes, Patrick, on behalf of sunrise egg. So I, I believe the application speaks for itself. Um it's a very large agricultural property, traffic north road. The uh owner is intending to sell a twelve acre parcel that's proposed for the subdivision. That's improved by a single family residence and a barn to a. Another resident of the town of Wosco who's intending to move and reside there. Uh the owner's intent is there to just continue to farm the remaining balance of the land, which is all agricultural until of in nature. Um, I don't believe, I think the uh. Board has the requisite agricultural data statement, together with all the supplemental documents, the. Short form seeker, et cetera. So I don't believe that there's anything that would uh cause the application to be deemed incomplete. Uh, the only thing I would note, um. And I, I think it's a maybe a form over substance issue is that I had conversation with council. Uh attorney Blair regarding the two thirty-nine on, and uh review and referral. Um, the cap, the town code under one fifty dash seventy-four exempts subdivisions. That are creating not more than two, well, five lots really, because it's any subdivision that's not requiring the Q County Health Department. Uh review and approval of the subdivision and the health department rule this follows the public health law. Which requires that sort of review if the subdivision proposed is creating five or more lots. Of which there would be less than five acres. So I, I do believe it's an exempt um. Proposal for purposes of county planning, uh and speaking with the code enforcement officer, I, I don't have an issue insofar as the. Town wants to uh review and refer it up for two thirty-nine to review. Um it is a little bit of a. Non-discretionary item, at least in my interpretation of the code, because it says shall and does not say may. So it says shall be exempt from that sort of review. Uh but again, all, all things being equal, uh we just have a, a kind of sensitive component to that particular transfer. Otherwise addressed on the papers as it been submitted to the town for town planning board for review.
Patrick.
Uh it has been referred to the county planning board for two thirty-nine review based on the fact that it's on a county road. Um and they are scheduled to review this next Thursday, the twentieth. And I believe there's language uh in the proposed resolution uh addressing um. The applicant's willingness to follow any recommendations made by the county planning board.
But.
Yes. All set, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and you all have before you, I believe, your secret form.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And again, these are all. Um negative answers. I would uh. Propose a, a neck deck.
Your vote?
Um, so need a.
I made motion.
Motion.
Uh your motion.
My motion.
How about that? Yeah.
Roll call, yes?
Karen?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes. Okay, we now. I request a motion to open up. Uh, public hearing at uh four twenty-one.
A more.
Okay, second?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Yes.
I. Anyone for or against, wanna speak at this time? Okay, we'll close the. Public hearing at four twenty-two. Okay.
Want to go through the resolution again?
I don't want, do I have to read the?
No.
Pro resolution?
It's, it's identical to the other resolution. I just wanna highlight that section that says that now therefore be resolved with the town of Losco planning board. And a regularly session duly convened and hereby. Approves or disapproves circle one, the applicant's minor subdivision application request subject to compliance with any and all comments and recommendations. From the new accounting planning board two thirty-nine committee.
I would, I would suggest that we do this, uh approve continued upon. Compliance with the two thirty-nine.
And Brian, did you second?
Yes, I did.
So we go to roll call vote?
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
So that's pending two thirty-nine approval, right, in the rest?
Yeah, that's right. And the other, uh, the other application also had that language in there, and I informed the other attorney.
The, the reason for the two thirty-nine again is because you said it was um.
County road. They're on county roads, county and state roads.
Okay.
That was our rare canal.
What's in their meeting?
Certified that there is a discrepancy there, uh, and the standard interpretation will work on that. Picture? I'll say it.
That's mine. I just want to point a clarification on that one. Um at the time, assuming at the time the county plan. Approves or doesn't provide any sort of negative feedback, are we able to obtain signed maps and not come back to an August meeting?
I can request that the chair sign them and leave them with me in escrow because the county usually issues those decisions that same morning.
Perfect.
And I would anticipate that they're going to come back that it's local concern only. For probably.
Right, right. Right, right, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, the resolution is, as of, our resolution is, is up today, so there's nothing that we need to do.
Just to, just to.
The county just needs to sign off.
Great, thank you.
You could have read the whole thing.
I'm gonna need a drink of water, I gotta. Um.
If something's stolen.
Alright. We will next move on to the RMP provo- proposal. Which is the old Kent Columbus property. And Patrick, I think you're up to bat again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I think similar to the last application, the, the. Matter is kind of speaks for itself in terms of the substance of the minor subdivision application that was submitted. Um, just to provide some context and background with that. The, and I, I think the narrative, I'm trusting that you all received the copy of the narrative that was included, but the um. The property is also adjoining another property that's a standalone parcel. It's a little under uh one point five acres. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot that's seventy-five feet in width and approximately five hundred to six hundred feet in depth. And the reason I point that out is that the, that property is uh also owned by the applicant, and so. The merger of those properties that had been done would have created a parcel that was larger than five acres, which. Could have led to a PDD application versus where we are now. Um the applicant. And members were very cognizant of the surrounding neighborhood in the sense that. What we were trying to do is keep that property um relative to how it would be used. Um in harmony with how the properties to the north are used and properties to the south are used. Um obviously, we're cognizant that of what it was. Unfortunately, it wasn't that, it couldn't be that any longer based on the concerns that the nonprofit had. And so they marketed, they essentially marketed the property for sale. Um ultimately. You know, I think the other side of that is, and not that this is subject to, in a sense, a neighbor review like an area variance would be. But we felt it would be much easier from the standpoint of neighbor um. You know, weighing in or really neighbors being friendly towards the project if we were looking at residential lots versus trying to put some sort of venue into that space. Which would seem to me to only exacerbate a situation that's already uncomfortable for people. Um so our goal again was to keep it in harmony with everything that surrounds it to the north and to the south. Um and even with that said, the lots that are being um proposed. Are really sizable relative to what's to the north and to the south. Uh each of the lots is a minimum of one hundred feet wide on the lakefront side and on the road front side. And each of the lots in depth, they're very deep, uh they're access to six hundred feet deep. Which is why the, each of the lots resulted in a one point five or greater acre in terms of this area. Um so we felt that that was best for purposes of keeping in harmony. Beyond that, um the narrative, I think, provides some options relative to conditional approval. Um one of the things that I think we're leaning from this process is that it would be easier. Uh for there to just be a conditional approval, if at all, uh on the uh explicit demolition of accessory structures. Um initially, there was this idea that. Potential buyers could use those accessory structures. As accessory structures to residences that would be constructed on those proposed parcels. Uh it seems as though that would create kind of a muddiness and drag the process out. So it seemed more appropriate to simply go back to an option where. We would be responsible for the removal of accessory structures as part of any sort of approval to avoid an issue where. A applicant for a building permit at a later time did not properly. Uh do whatever work they were required to do on that accessory structure, and then it represented something that would be really in violation of current code.
That would gonna be my next question.
So, so ideally, um and again, I think preferably. We would look at this as a conditional approval, but conditioned specifically upon the removal of accessory structures that would violate current town code. Obviously, they're pre-existing as they presently sit, um and our intention would be to remove those for the benefit of the application.
Um. Are you gonna put any language in? For the people who buy these lots? Suppose someone buys where they said they wanna subdivide it, because they're. These are size lots.
Right, honestly, for our purposes, that would be at the discretion of the property owner. However, the way that they're gonna be subdivided. From basically east to west, they would have to provide a right of way or easement. To the property owner that would run through the property owner's land to get to their lot on the water. The other thing is from a, I guess, a aesthetics standpoint is we didn't feel as though. People would want somebody above because of the way the topography plays. They would have a property or potentially above that looking down on their property. So again, we, you know, just looking at it six different ways, we felt it was better to keep very large lots that were at least a hundred feet wide. And avoid any of the complexity and really probably unfriendliness that would come with a PDD.
Hmm hmm.
But, but no restrictive language per se. I think the, uh I'll let the code enforcement officer speak to that, but I think otherwise the lots are compliant with. Code for the lake lot district that they presently sit, but for the accessory structures.
Right. Okay. Anything more, Patrick?
Nothing at this time.
Um. Mister Doyle, you deem the application and material submitted to be substantially complete?
Yes.
Um, I would like to introduce a resolution. And it's been drafted. And we can go through the major components. With the planning board. Then I'd like to entertain a motion. To approve that resolution instead of public hearing for August second. Well, I have to find that motion first. Where you guys got that? Okay, this one.
That correct, right?
Would the court read this, please?
Sure. Whereas on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, the town of Losco Planning Board met at a regularly scheduled meeting. To review the subdivision application and supporting materials. Submitted by RMP Property LLC dated June twentieth, two thousand three for a minor free lot subdivision. Of land relating to the existing four point six one eight acres on tax map number one three eight dot zero. Three dash one dash four seven. Located in the town's residential and seasonal residential district in the town of Wosco. Whereas the planning board received as part of the application, the town of Wosco application for minor subdivision dated June twentieth, two thousand point three. With accompanying supplemental narrative. A SEBRA short environmental assessment form dated June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, and a stamped subdivision plan survey of the property by Watkins. Land survey dated, I don't have that date.
We can fill it in.
We'll fill it in. Whereas prior to taking action to the project application, the planning board must comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEBRA. And implementing regulations at six. Part NYCCRR, part six one seven, and hereby acknowledges. That the proposed project is subject to seeker and determines that the same. That the same is an unlisted action pursuant to six NYCRR, part six point seven, and whereas. The planning board has considered potential lead agency designation. And determines its intention to act as the lead agency responsible for conducting an uncoordinated review of the proposed action under seeker. And classify this in an unlisted action. And whereas a careful examination and review of the application was conducted by the planning board. At to the level of completeness of the material presented. And whereas the planning board also wishes to refer. The application and all related materials to the Q County Planning Board for review and. Comment pursuing to sections two thirty-nine one. And two thirty-nine M of the New York State General Municipal Law. And whereas the planning board also wishes to schedule a public side. Public hearing on the proposed subdivision applicant as required by one twenty-sixth of the town of Losco zoning. And now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby deemed the application substantially complete. Such that a formal review of the application may officially proceed forward and further binds. The proposed subdivision application is hereby deemed to be an unlisted action under seeker. Six one seven and the planning board hereby determines and shall serve as lead agency and shall undertake any uncoordinated review of the action. The planning board shall refute, refer the act, application and pertinent related materials to the Q County Planning Board for review and comment pursuant to general municipal law two thirty-nine. One dash M. The planning board will hold a public hearing at the town of Losco Municipal Building on August second, two thousand twenty-three at four AM. Or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. For the purpose of taking further public comment on and giving due consideration to the application. And the planning board secretary shall ensure proper notice of the public hearing shall be undertaken and completed for such purposes. Be it further resolved that this resolution will be filed in the office of the town clerk and files that are readily accessible to the public. And made available upon request. Subject only to the limitations established by the Freedom of Law Information Law. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Would like to move your resolution.
Mister Karen, uh in the, in the first paragraph, it refers to the residential and seasonal residential district. It's located in the town's Lakeshore district.
It is.
We all remember that.
Yeah.
Uh huh. The point, Patrick.
Can I get a motion to amend that? Make that Lakeshore District?
So will.
Second.
All in favor? And a motion to accept this resolution that I just read.
I'll move it.
I move to the, uh, with the modification. Except that Andrew read it, but Lakeshore.
Right. That was, that was
what's added.
Yeah.
So Ron and Brian and Howard, can I do the roll call?
Yes.
Okay, Gary?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes. Resolution passed.
So we'll see you August second.
Yeah, just point of clarification with that application. The Cow Planning Board is going to serve as the lead agency, but there's not been at this present time a negative declaration. Am I accurate in that regard?
There is not been at this time.
Right, okay.
There will be one coming, hopefully. But it's yet to be.
Right.
That's the next time.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and the last topic is the Lattimore. Yeah. Or the next, I mean, there's one more. The Lattimore project. Patrick, you talking about that one?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Busy.
So this, I talked with the code enforcement officer a little about this. This is a, is subject to, it's, it's really for preliminary review. Because there is a component of this that includes a variance request for area purposes. The present structures on what would ultimately be two lots, there is an accessory structure detached garage that would land that garage seven point five feet from the southern boundary line of a new lot that was created. Obviously, the, the side yard setback is ten feet. So that area variance would be considered by the ZBA that their next scheduled meeting one day a few days from now. So that's the, the first point of information, the preliminary review. Other than that, I think the application as submitted is complete. It did include a short form seeker. There's also a a narrative that was included with that because the intention with the proposed new lot would be the construction of a residence, so that's why that accessory structure would ultimately remain based on application for a building permit that would be submitted by that new lot owner.
Right. Any further questions for Mr. Carbon Arrow on this from the board? Mr. Doyle, do you deem the application and the materials submitted to be substantially complete?
Yes.
Okay, I would introduce the resolution. Uh, we've already got drafted and go through the major components with the planning board. Larry, would you mind?
No.
My voice is going.
Going. All right. Whereas on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, the Town of Wasco Planning Board met at a regularly scheduled meeting to review the subdivision application and supporting materials submitted by Eric Lattimore dated June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three for a minor two lot subdivision of land relating to the existing one point five zero nine acres of tax map one two three point zero four dash one dash five four located in the town's residential district in the town of Wasco. Whereas the planning board received as part of the application, the Town of Wasco application for minor subdivision there June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, with accompanying supplemental narrative, a SECPRA uh, form dated twenty of June twenty twenty-three and a stamp subdivision plan survey of the property. I don't have a date on that. Can you fill that in? Uh, or do I? And a variance application dated June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas prior to taking action on the project application, the planning board must comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act and its implementing regulations. And hereby acknowledges that the proposed project is subject to SECPRA and determines that the same is an unlisted action pursuant to six NY C R R parts one six or six one seven. And whereas the planning board is considered potential lead agency designation and determines its intention to act as the lead agency responsible for conducting an uncoordinated review of the proposed action under SECPRA and classify this as an unlisted action. And whereas a careful examination revealed that application was conducted by the planning board as to the level of completeness of the materials presented. And whereas the planning board also wishes to refer the application and all related materials to the Q County Planning Board for review and comment pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the New York State General Municipal Law. And whereas the planning board also wishes to schedule a public and public size a public hearing on the proposed subdivision applications required by chapter one twenty-six of the Town of Wasco zoning law. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby deems the application substantially complete such that a formal review of the application may officially proceed forward. And further finds the proposed subdivision application is hereby deemed to be an unlisted action under SECPRA six seventeen. And the planning board hereby determines it shall serve as lead agency and shall undertake an uncoordinated review of the action. The planning board shall refer the application and pertinent related materials to the Q County Planning Board for review and comment pursuant to General Municipal Law, paragraph two thirty-nine. The planning board will hold a public hearing at the Town of Wasco Municipal Building, August second twenty twenty-three at four P M or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard for the purpose of taking further public comment on and giving due consideration to the application and the planning board secretary shall ensure proper notice of the public hearing shall be undertaken and completed for such purposes. Be it further resolved that this, that this resolution will be filed in the office of the town clerk in files that are readily accessible in public and made available upon request subject only to the limitations established by the Freedom of Information Law. Be it for the resolve that this resolution shall take effective immediately. Requiring a vote.
I move that motion.
All right.
Second.
To Larry?
Roll call.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes. Well, now, this will be forwarded to the town attorney and engineer for technical reviews. And the next
questions? Patrick, can you?
No, I am all set. Thank you.
All right.
The next one is Mr. Jeffy. Patrick, you want, this is just to add a small shed.
Say the easy one for the last. This is a site plan that is forged and various reminder with, I think it was been recorded twice and was before compared by Bob Edgerton Architect. And the existing drainage and bioswales and the post-location of the house re- remained the same and the erosion control proposed and drainage. They are add, it's tweaked because they're adding a sixteen by ten shed. And it's dotted, it's in front of the house. And if you want to note that it required a variance from the zoning board of appeals. So they got a height variance and we did um, we, they met a couple times on that because they had some concerns from an adjoining neighbor that they were to work out, which was always nice when it happens in advance. So that's all we're doing on this, including the plan that was originally dated before November of two thousand twenty and revised on seventeen May of two thousand twenty-three. And the applicant could not be here, but is available by phone. We'll have a question, but I think it's pretty
Straightforward, isn't it?
I agree.
Yeah, there was no
Any questions?
I, I assume the sheds, do you know anything about the construction? Is it, is it, there's no foundation? They're not excavating?
It'll be on a gravel pad.
Gravel bed, okay, so they're just take the bobs soil out?
I determine that it's something different. If they propose something different, if there's any, I would certainly sure they bring in.
Okay, yeah, so, so I'm going to prove that based, based on
I don't have the file, but I think it's on a gravel pad.
Is it on, does it say that?
The package, it's packaged up there, I'm not sure.
It's just ten by sixteen sheds for storage?
Yep.
In the building permit application, it should note the foundation.
I don't see it on the, well, that's the application.
Should be right in, I'm just gonna hope to
Yeah, that would be, I mean, assuming it's, it's all they're doing.
Yeah, they bring them on skids and there, there's no method of attachment.
Probably. Sets it on stone. They all do.
Yeah.
Okay, so
Goes without saying, I mean, they mentioned the possibility of the house. We have to come back to us if they did.
No, we're, we're approving the eyes, and, and again, the house did not change from your original approval. The only thing we're approving is the addition of sheds, but I also, in addition to the height variance, it did require a slight coverage variance. Let's see, they were originally nine point nine percent, so they were in compliance with building coverage. They went to ten point six, so they, they were point six percent over, and that, that was by the zoning board, all of them.
So this is, okay. Right, okay. So based on approval by the zoning board?
We already got that, right?
Yeah, it's already done, then, yeah. Move to approve the application I submitted.
Karen, second?
Yes. Second.
Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes. There is all the business to come before the board the night that I have unless a board member has something more.
I will ask that, Gary, you can reach over and grab your intended sheet if you all sign it before you go. I'll have Ron stand up. Thank you.
Yep.
So we could look forward to some
Whatever you want.
Thank you.
So you expect that there's going to be additional I mean, between now and then?
Patrick?
Probably.
I think
Those lots are all non-conforming. I think that, but they seem to get wider after you One question.